I think we're ready. All right, welcome back from the lunch break. We're going to go ahead and move on to our next item on the agenda, which is a hearing, consideration of transient occupancy tax appeal. 21469 Yankee Valley Road, Hidden Valley Lake, California, 95467. APN 14413104000. And this will be presented by the treasure tax collector, Patrick Sullivan.
Jesus Marquez.
Jesus Marquez. Also, we need to make sure and swear folks in that are here on behalf of this appeal, or hearing, sorry, hearing appeal.
All right, so with your right hand raised, do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
All right, with that, we'll go ahead and give the floor to you, Mr. Sullivan.
All right, so, thank you, Mr. Chair. Patrick Sullivan, Treasury Tax Collector. I'm here with Jesus Marquez, an accountant auditor in our office. So this appeal is before you regarding a transient occupancy tax. The reason it is at this point where it's had an appeal is that the initial deadlines to respond to our office were not met. So, our office uses the state guidelines provided by the State Controller's Office to impose tax when we are not able to conduct a full investigation or audit. In that circumstance, we impose the maximum occupancy as determined by our office, and we apply that to the tax formula from our ordinance. So ultimately, in this case, a total of $70,160.06 was leaned and attached to the property after the taxes were imposed. I'm going to turn over to Mr. Marquez just to give a brief background of this property and how this came to pass.
Thank you, Board. Jesus Marquez, I am an accountant in the Treasury Tax Collector's office. So our office received a software that allows us to track properties on online platforms. This is how this property was identified. We provided the packet, which multiple letters were sent out to all of the properties that were identified. And this property here, we didn't receive any sort of response after the board decided the June 13th deadline was the official date to waive interest and penalties. At that point, we had to calculate the taxes that were due based on the State Controller's guidelines. From there, we didn't receive any sort of response. After our calculations, we had to file the lien for the $70,000. And then at that point, after we sent out the recorded lien, Mr. Skiles reached out to our office and we gave him the information on the appeal process.
So the difficulty here is that in the other cases, the standard practice for our office is to hold the initial hearing, the appellant. Any taxpayer has a right to a hearing first with our office. Typically, it's the result of that hearing that would be challenged in an appeal to the board. In this case, the hearing in my office resulted in a default judgment since we didn't have contact at that $70,000. Now that Mr. Skiles has gone in contact with our office, he has provided all the documentation we requested. We were able to utilize that and our own records to identify the amount that we would have assessed had the information been timely provided. So that total is $12,324.22. That's the applicable transient occupancy tax penalties and interest as determined by actual occupancy, now that we're able to do that further review. Because it's beyond the timelines, our office no longer has the authority to waive any sort of tax that's owed. We can't make any modification on our own. So that's why we recommended to Mr. Skiles that he appeal to your board, as it's really the only option we have left to revise this amount. So I have spoken with Mr. Skiles, and it is my understanding that he would be amenable to that $12,324.22 amount. So I know this is the first type of appeal we've done in this scenario, so we wanted to bring it to your board. And Mr. Skiles can correct me in any way if that's not my understanding.
All right, any questions for Patrick before I let Mr. Mr. Skiles, do you have, would you like to add to this?
Yeah, I'm in perfect agreement with this and the numbers. We spoke, actually, the three of us took different conversations at different times. I do apologize for not addressing this timely. The mailing address was incorrect with the county, and so I wasn't receiving a lot of this. But as soon as we received it, we took note of it and we addressed it. So the numbers that has been calculated by Mr. Jesus here, I'm in agreement with. We would like to be able to move forward and be able to get this corrected as soon as possible.
All right, thank you for that. Any questions for?
I have one. What's the breakdown on the penalties versus what's the actual owed?
So that's in the, so, I'm sorry, are you referring to the original $70,000?
No, not the original $70,000, the actual amount.
So that was added, and I apologize, that was added to the packet yesterday or to the board materials. But the penalties that would be due, the base amount of tax is $7,975, so just shy of $8,000. So that remaining, that remainder is TOT, about $2,000 in tax or in penalties and interest?
Thank you.
I would say. And then there's the TID, that's that missing piece at the end.
Supervisor Sabatier?
So I appreciate that consensus was found. Glad that we were able to make that connection and find some way to resolve this problem. I guess I want to speak more on, we've gone through different iterations of TOT where we've kind of given some very lenient ways to get people into compliance. I don't know what the list looks like. I think we've done it maybe three times over the years to try to get people into the system. And I believe we had a June 2025 deadline, June 30th, of taxes and penalties and things would not apply as long as you paid. And obviously, we're past that. I'm just looking to see, and I'm not speaking that you are in this situation, but I feel like since we've already had the discussion three times, that there may be some repeat offenders out there. And I would really love to see an ordinance update where repeat offenders have a little bit more, we have a little bit more teeth and hopeful that maybe county council can help bring something back to us because I want to make sure that we have the teeth to make, to get people into compliance rather than continuously have to try so hard. Because just this agenda item itself costs taxpayer dollars to put it on the agenda, spend time here with us. And again, not singling you out, but I've seen the TOT thing come back again and again. How do we resolve it? And if there's consensus to see if we can have a repeat offender ordinance amendment, that would be great.
I would note right now that it wouldn't necessarily require an ordinance. Your board, I believe, could do a resolution or give direction. I mean, our office, our staff could identify a repeat offender so that if there is an appeal, we could note that this person has previously had violations. Is that right?
So with your board's direction, I think staff can certainly have further discussions on that matter. On the issue among others, whether or not this can be effectuated via policy or resolution, or whether there will need to be an amendment to the ordinance to reflect your board's direction as outlined by Supervisor Sabatier.
Yeah, and since this one does not, that's not the proper avenue for this particular one. I'm personally, I'm willing to support the reduction to the $12,000.
All right, are there any other? And so are there anything else to add?
No, I do have, after speaking with county council, I do have some recommended language that may be appropriate to share. The parties here are in escrow for the property, so I think they're hoping to resolve this as quickly as possible. So I think if we were to adopt this language as your board's findings or your decision, that would allow us to move forward in helping them close out their escrow process and not delay this any longer. So if you'd like, I could read this aloud and see if it works.
Real quick, I think there was a comment.
Yeah.
Man, did you want to come forward to the microphone and state your comment? I've seen you sworn in, so I know that.
Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors. My name is Lori Skiles. I am the joint owner of 21469 Yankee Valley Road in Hidden Valley Lake. I am appearing here today to appeal the amount of the delinquent transient occupancy tax lien on our property. My husband and I have been separated as of May 2024 and are currently going through a divorce. I have recently been made aware that there are multiple letters that have been sent out regarding the tax lien on our property that were addressed to both myself and my husband, but were sent to our marital home mailing address, which I have not accessed since May 8th, 2024. I understand now that we should have filed a TOT certificate for our rental property and reported and remitted the appropriate transient occupancy tax. I also understand now that since that was not done, the current total tax due of about $70,000 is an estimate from the State Controller's Office that assumes full occupancy for the entire period of noncompliance at the highest advertised rate. During the time of owning this property, I have not been privy to any financial information regarding our Airbnb as I was not put on the Airbnb or VRBO accounts. I would like to appeal that amount and reduce it based on the actual gross receipts that were provided by my husband. I appreciate your consideration. Thank you so much for your time and for hearing me on this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
So that, and I think the relief requested is exactly what we're proposing here, with the reduction of the $12,000. That is based off the actual gross receipts, based off the documentation that was provided to us. And it's also in alignment with our own findings, what we're able to determine on our own investigation, so.
All right, with that, go ahead Supervisor Sabatier.
I wouldn't call it a relief request. It's just the right thing because $70,000 would be a huge overestimate. This is the right amount, so I'm glad everyone agrees. I'm just looking to see if there's consensus for repeat offenders since we've had the TOT discussion so often and we still have these issues.
No, I concur on the repeat.
Yeah, I think Patrick said.
Yeah, I'm good with that. We'll coordinate with county council on that.
Thank you.
And then with that, we just take action from here, or do we give public comment?
Public comment or any other testimony?
Yeah, there are two people gave testimony. Is there anyone else that would like to give any testimony or discussion to this? Contribute to this? If not, we'll bring it back to the board. Go ahead Lloyd.
So.
All right, I'll proceed with this language, and I apologize, we're only able to settle on this last night, so this is fairly fresh. So number one, the Board of Supervisors accepts and adopts the materials in the attached packet as part of the administrative record for this proceeding. Number two, the Board of Supervisors accepts and adopts the revised transient occupancy tax assessment, including interest and penalties, for a total of $12,324.22. Number three, the Board of Supervisors authorizes the Treasury Tax Collector's Office to take any necessary actions to implement these findings, including the issuance of any potential rescission and recording of revised liens while reserving all other rights and remedies available to the county for further enforcement.
I'd like to offer that.
Do we have to do all three, one at a time, or can we do all three?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So those are the findings that are being proposed to your board for approval under the Lake County Code, Chapter 18 of the Lake County Code. And so if your board is in agreement with those findings, the motion itself would be to move to grant the appeal in part and deny the appeal in part based on those findings. And the reason for the in part reference there is because the appeal at the onset was appealing the $70,000 amount. And now pursuant to the stipulation of the parties, between the parties, it has now been, you know, agreed upon to amount to about approximately $12,000. And so with the, with your motion, if your board is willing to consider a motion to grant the appeal in part and deny the appeal in part, it would be based, as part of the motion, based on the findings as outlined by Treasury Tax Collector Solomon, and that would be the motion.
Can I offer it as you stated?
Yes, it would be so moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries 5-0. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. With that, we'll move on to our 6.3, Consideration of Presentation on Cannabis Policy Update Process. Community Development Director, Mariaa Turner, will be coming up, and go forward from there.
Hello, I'm Mariaa Turner, Community Development Director.
Hello, I'm Maria Turner, Community Development Director. I had it all ready. All right. I appreciate the board hearing this update on the cannabis regulation update process. As the board is well aware, there are many changes that will be integrated into the future Article seventy-three. Our department took time to take a look at every single item and actually separated out in what we feel easily qualifies in SEQA for the common sense exemption versus which type, which topics or items could take a little more review. We have presented sort of this list breakdown in the staff report. And so what you have listed first in the bullet points is the article or is the one that we think we can have done by the end of this year. Those will be, or that ordinance will be an amendment to Article twenty-seven, the existing ordinance for cannabis and all of our other zoning permits and minor and major use permits. Excuse me. The timeline for this first ordinance amending Article twenty-seven remains the same mostly as listed in the staff report. We did present an update, or this update to the Planning Commission at their October ninth meeting. We do intend to have a draft ordinance available for the Planning Commission by its November thirteenth meeting. And then the only one, the only date that's actually a little squishy is that November eighteenth meeting. Because I want to make sure that the comments from the Planning Commission, the comments from the Ag Advisory Commission, Committee and County Council and staff are all on the same page. So that may, that mating may change from November eighteenth to a later meeting. It'll be as soon as possible within the same calendar year. Also taking, excuse me, sorry. Also taking into account, making sure we have all five supervisors present at the meetings. Holiday scheduling of agendas gets a little sketchy. So if we could take a moment and go over what is in the draft ordinance to amend Article twenty-seven, it is that first list of bullet points on page one of your staff report. Increasing the setbacks from off-site residences from two hundred to five hundred feet. A cap in the size of the commercial canopy at twenty acres. And I can stop anytime, Chair, so.
Okay, I think when we had spoke to you early on, we had stated from five hundred to a thousand feet, we weren't sure where we were going to put it. So that, just that note, that it was ambiguous as far as where we hadn't made a decision.
Sure, yeah, I started with five hundred because that's where I had clear consensus. But definitely open to having that conversation. Yeah, thank you. Incomplete and abandoned applications. This establishes a process for staff to get them off of our books in case of extended incompleteness or lack of response, thank you, from the applicant. Application and qualifications for background clearances. We will synchronize with the state regarding identification of those responsible and having ownership in a permit or license. This is directly to address the concerns expressed by Treasurer Tax Collector Patrick Sullivan in previous meetings. Active warrant and review for property owners and applicants. After the posting of this agenda, I did have a conversation with the sheriff who indicated that we cannot request an active warrant. Search, there are very stiff regulations by the state on how that can come about, and it's mainly just for law enforcement purposes. But what we do intend to do is add some wording that should we become aware of any active warrants for property owners or applicants or any members of the permit party, it will result in setting aside, tabling, the processing of that application until resolution.
Can I ask something on that? Do they let you know when there's been a warrant or something along those lines on a cannabis grow? How do you know about them? In other words, are there warrants and?
They would have to just notify us if they were aware of them, but they're not going to do a search.
But are they notifying you now at this time? Is that something you've asked for, requested that they?
No, this would be new.
I think the better, sorry, Chair. I think the better question is, have you in the past been informed of warrants on a application or a property owner in the past?
I don't know. I could defer to staff, who will probably be texting me momentarily.
Tell you yes.
Oh, good. Well, thank you.
Yes, you and I have had this conversation. I've had the conversation with the sheriff. You didn't have the language in here to do anything with it.
Right. Great. And we will take care of that. Method of calculating the canopy. This is just to, more of a notification that the, our department, upon annual compliance monitoring, we do an actual assessment of total canopy to make sure that it is matching what was approved on the site plan. We will do our best to stay up to date with whatever measurement the state is using. So if they change, we'll change. But that is for the ease of our permatees, so they don't get caught in the middle of being fine in ours, our calculation, but off with the state or the other way around.
Okay, on that, the tax base that was approved, Measure C establishes the square footage based on the cultivation area?
Yes.
Or the, or the entire?
The entire area is known as the cultivation area. The specific area for canopy is called the canopy area.
Okay, and we are, we're calculating under the cultivation area. Question?
I would defer that to the Treasurer Tax Collector because I do not do any taxation.
Okay, thank you.
I do believe, though, there was previous board action to modify it from cultivation area to canopy area. But again, I'll defer to the Treasurer Tax Collector. Setbacks from industrial hemp and commercial cannabis canopy. This is to aid our staff in being able to differentiate what is the cannabis canopy that is regulated by us and what is the hemp canopy that is actually under the jurisdiction of the Agricultural Commissioner. But since there is no requirement for distancing, and it kind of looks the same when we're out there, this will help our staff.
Now, is that, is it true that you cannot grow both crops on the same parcel?
Not on the same premises. And so that's different than the same parcel.
It is different.
And we take a look at premises by identifying what's within that fenced area. You're not going to grow hemp within your canopy area. But we need the additional clarification because there are no setbacks currently for hemp.
Okay, but what about, so you say that within the canopy area, so that was something that felt ambiguous to me?
We use the state's definition for premises.
Okay, thank you.
My pleasure. Scenic corridor setbacks. This is still under discussion with staff. We do have, there was a lot of conversation regarding where was that five hundred foot distance of scenic, of a scenic combining overlay to be placed? How did that come about? And it turns out it's a, it's a long-used internal process. So this one is actually open for further discussion on how we're going to assess it in the future and make modifications if necessary. So we're not, we're not done on that one. Metric track and trace tag destruction after use. This is, this is to come into synchronization with the state. In the commercial cannabis cultivation exclusion areas, we are adding the land to seven point seven nine Rumsey, which is known as public lands. We're making clarification on that, that the thousand-foot setback would start from there, that seven point seven nine Rumsey spot or line. In the farmland protection zone, greenhouse construction shall utilize those anchor points rather than pouring a concrete slab foundation. Setbacks from water courses, we are going to synchronize with the California State Water Resources Quality Control Board. And this would be for all Class One through four water courses.
And what is that? Is that a hundred and fifty feet?
It varies. Let me pull that up for you. We had a table that I didn't put in this. And because we're synchronizing with the state, we will write that we are synchronizing with the state so that if they pivot or change, ours pivots and changes. And. It is one hundred and fifty feet from Class One and Two, which include perennial water courses and water bodies like lakes, ponds, springs, as well as intermittent water courses or wetlands. That'll be a hundred and fifty. And then ephemeral, ephemeral water courses will be fifty feet. Then man-made, oh, okay, man-made irrigation canals, water supply reservoirs, hydroelectric canals that support native aquatic species. There's an established riparian vegetation zone, which we already have in our zoning code. Construction hours, operational hours, and delivery hours. These were, this was a recommendation that came out of the task force. And it pretty much mirrors a lot of other ag as well. Opt-out and reduced canopy process. Notification to staff will be, or to the department will be due by June first. This is to enable staff to have a timely turnaround for the report that we send down to the tax collectors that they use for the assessment purposes. Opt-out to not be allowed for consecutive years. In already existing code, the Lake County Code, on non-use of a permit or an inactivity of that, of that permit activity for two years results in the expiration of a use permit. This was problematic for cannabis because it makes it different than all the other permits. But, and so we're going to go back trying to sort of streamline, make cannabis use permits as similar to the other use permits as possible. Streamline that to not more, to not be allowed for consecutive years. So this still allows some flexibility for the business owner, the permit owner, while not causing confusion as far as normal use permit expirations. Voluntary termination of use for an approved project. This is an already approved permit, not a withdrawal of an application, and it will be a new process. But this has come up due to requests from our permatees and staff. Additional clarification on expiration, two years of inactivity. Removal of the ten-year permit limit. This would also then remove the instructions regarding reapplication. And this would, this is another instance of making the cannabis use permits similar to all other conditional use permits in that they go with the land. They last as long as the use is there unless there's a need for now either a voluntary termination or revocation. And then the addition of a five thousand dollar restoration bond with Lake County as the oblig-. I don't even know how to pronounce that word. Sorry. Obligie, I love it. Thank you. That's much better. Again, proposed timeline, we've already accomplished bullet point number one with the Planning Commission on October ninth. We do intend to prevent or present this draft ordinance on November thirteenth and will follow thereafter with the Board of Supervisors. Items not included in this Article twenty-seven amendment. Talk about air quality, water use, additional prohibited activities, shared, some of the new permit uses that the board has approved in concept. Type S shared manufacturing, type nineteen retail sales delivery only, type ten retail sales with onsite consumption. It's the onsite consumption that hasn't been, that's a new, that would be a new addition to land use. The temporary cannabis events, temporary cannabis events with onsite consumption, and dealing with the concentration of retail sales locations. The last item for your board's consideration today is recognition that in the years that we have been going through cannabis permit process as well as annual compliance monitoring and dealing with complaints, the two main topics of concern have been odor impacts and water impacts. The board has taken steps, particularly during that drought, the drought we went through, to require hydrology reports to try to deal with the water issues. And so we do still, even though we don't have a drought, the department is fully authorized and has continued to require hydrology reports on any use permit that's proposed to use ground or surface water. And so we are looking to answer those questions of how much water is available, how much is this project going to use, what will be the impact on the existing water, which, and who will that affect? A lot of our complaints have been about odor, odor impacts. And we do not have established thresholds for what, what creates a significant impact for odor when we analyze those. We've been working on different ways that we could address that within our code, specific to your odor mitigation plan, your property management plan, requiring filtration, vegetative screening, things like that. But we don't have established thresholds for what is a significant impact. How do we measure it and how do we mitigate it? Can we mitigate it? And so I wanted to present to the board an option which involves attachment number one, which is the estimate. We asked a planning firm that we're already working with right now on Lake County two thousand and fifty to say, to just give us an estimate. What would a programmatic EIR to establish thresholds and find mitigations for odor impacts look like? And so they came back with the attachment, about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in about eight months. And I'm just presenting that to the board as something to think about because it helps us when we're doing our SEQA evaluations to have established thresholds that are based in science that we can rely on. As well as, it helps not only during the SEQA analysis process, but also later when evaluating complaints to establish or assess whether our permatees are in compliance with their approved permits or if they're violating. So I wanted to hand that to the board, not necessarily as it would be holding over us moving forward with the remaining items from the permit, but rather as an option for the board to discuss and give staff direction. And that concludes my presentation. I am happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for the presentation. So let's break it down between the programmatic EIR and the list of things that can come to us more directly due to meeting the SEQA exemption. I know that we gave you direction to look at things that didn't require SEQA to bring back to us. I feel the list is overwhelming to the point that it's going to take a whole lot longer to ever get to our First Amendment, just because there's going to be some nitpicking on very specific things. Other things such as the scenic corridor setback, I think that's just a scenic corridor setback issue, not a cannabis issue, that, in my opinion, has impacts on all other projects where it's not defined. And I think that it should just be a separate thing and not specifically cannabis. And then also the voluntary termination of a use permit, I think should just be a general update to our zoning ordinance, not a cannabis. What if somebody wants to get rid of a permit for whatever it is that they were doing before? So I don't think some of these are strictly cannabis-related. I'm going to provide what I think are, not the easiest, even the things I would like to put on the list for us to amend as quickly as possible are going to be complicated. But the increased setbacks from off-site residents, I think, is of utmost importance. And I am. And I am wide open for a tiered approach. We have a 10,000-square-foot minor use permit. That should be a certain number of feet. Whatever number of acres should be a number of feet. And I know that we've gone all the way, at least in the past, 70 or 80 acres. That should not be 500 feet if you have a 20-acre ranch right next to you. So I would like to see a tiered approach on how we can look at setbacks from off-site residences. I don't have very specific guidance to provide what the criteria would be, but I think that would be the best approach. Because going with 2,000 feet just because that works for 20 acres, that sucks for the small farmer that wants to do a 10,000-square-foot area that will not create an odor in the same way, where they have to meet that threshold. So I think a tiered approach would be the best. Application and qualification for background so that we can add the property owner, 100%. And the active warrant review, I understand that you're not the one to do that. But it would come along with the messaging from our sheriff department after doing the live scan and background checks on their own, that if they find something, they provide you that information. And then the last one that I think is another one that's important is the setback from water courses. Our current ones are not even applying with the states. It's all 100 feet when the state has 150 feet for certain waterways. And I thought I heard you incorrectly that you said it was either 50 feet or 150 feet. Did I hear that correctly?
I read off of the table from the water board.
I think it was 50 for the formal.
Right. Yeah, 50 from Class 3, I think.
And then... But I thought you put one...
No, yeah, 150 from Class 1. Sorry, you're right. I misread that. 100 from Class 2 and 50 from ephemeral water.
And right now we do 100 feet from all. And I think it's good to be in the state standards because it's confusing when we don't hit the 150 when we say 100. Obviously, we have to follow what the state says for that.
Sure.
But I just think it's easier if we just follow the state. And the last one I will add is the commercial cannabis cultivation exclusion area of the 7.79 Rumsey. I think it's important to protect our lake and within the public land. That means that it's 1,000 feet away from that. And I just think that those are priorities that I can identify specifically from the list. The rest, I am not... It has to happen tomorrow. And I don't want to have so many things in the amendment that we end up slowing down the entire process because even the list that I provided currently is going to be difficult. We've already received emails about setbacks and things like that. When it comes to the programmatic EIR, I would... Odor is going to be tough. I think the setbacks are going to help. And looking at a zoning is going to be the best way also too. And so to me, that's a much larger topic than what we have in front of us. But odor, I think, is going to be really difficult. But I thought you had talked to us that we were purchasing an olfactor meter. Have we purchased one?
We have one in code enforcement. We have no thresholds to establish the data that we get from them.
There is nothing anywhere within the state of California, Santa Barbara, or anywhere else that uses anything for guidance at all that we can copy and paste from? Or are we really starting from scratch and kind of tackling? I mean, that's one of the reasons we... Sorry, the air quality. Got rid of air quality is they were still waiting for the science, but yet collecting money from cannabis farmers. If we're creating the setbacks, I'm not sure that we are in the position to be the leader on that for that rather than zoning and setbacks ourselves. So odor is one that I'm confused how we're going to get there because farming just smells. Don't build a house in agricultural land and then complain about ag. That's just my personal opinion. Might piss off some people. But it's just... It's going to be a really difficult task. The water thing for the programmatic EIR has so many more uses for other projects and other things happening in our county than just cannabis. So absolutely in favor for that. So those are my comments.
I'm okay with looking at the tiered approach for the setbacks. But I am in favor of just moving ahead with all of these things at once. I know you've done a whole bunch of work. We've had the same conversation here so many times, just this year, but over the years. There's just a lot of things in here that will make a big difference, like the June 1st opt-out. So I would just like to just keep the momentum going, keep on this list. If you want to look at the setbacks, tiered options, you know, that does make sense. And then I am in favor of looking at the programmatic EIR and getting a consultant involved to help.
Supervisor.
Couple of questions on Supervisor Sabate's points on the scenic corridor setbacks. Is there already work we're doing in other areas where that could just be a, like he said, a general county issue, whether it's cannabis or some other project?
It could definitely impact other projects.
Okay. And then... Because I agree on those, I believe it was the scenic corridor and the permits.
The voluntary termination.
Yeah, those, I think, could apply to any project. And then on the other stuff, I mean, I don't see why we can't just try to move forward with the updates that we can. I want to get this done sooner than later. I realize that the EIR stuff's going to take a while, but I think if we can move forward and get these other ones that don't need EIR out of the way, that's kind of where I'm sitting. But I want to hear from the public too.
And I did not mean to imply that these others that are left out would require an EIR, but rather that we need to take a little bit more time to look at those internally as staff.
I'd like to speak after the public speaks.
All right. I'll open it up for the public at this time. If you want to come up and speak on this item, we'll give you three minutes and we'll go from there.
Good afternoon, Tom Lasik. A couple of things. One is that I want to focus on is the opt-out. The opt-out, as I understand it, is to avoid having to pay taxes for a year that the grower decides not to grow. I don't think Measure C covers that. And it is actually a change in the formula that only the voters can approve. So I question that just sort of on illegal standing grounds, whether opt-outs is really something that we can entertain. That being said, assuming that opt-outs are acceptable as a property owner that lives next to multiple cannabis growers and one that's been abandoned now for about three years. I've asked CDD, okay, they haven't grown in a couple of years. Does their permit expire? And they say, oh, no, as long as they pay the $1,000 or whatever the number is, we just keep it going. That's got to get fixed. I don't care how, but that's just got to get fixed. That's... It's not the highest and best use of the land to leave it abandoned and, you know, trashed. With regard to the EIR, I would exercise caution. I personally think the best practice is a programmatic EIR. When you look at other municipalities, they do a full programmatic EIR. The concern I have with this one is it's so limited to odor that I'm not sure if it's going to withstand any challenge because it starts getting into the realm of piecemealing. You're supposed to look at the whole... It's called a programmatic EIR for a reason. You're supposed to look at the whole of the project or the program. And that... And I could not find anywhere where they just did something on one thing or just did something on odor. I'm also concerned that, you know, we said we're going to have to wait for odor and water, which are the two, two of probably the three biggest concerns from the community, and that's going to take 12 months. Then something needs to be done sooner than that. And then as far as the cost of the EIR, they all run about 600K to a million. So a low ball of 250, I think should raise a red flag. You're probably not getting what you can actually use and be effective with. And they usually take 12 months to 18 months or longer. And this one, actually 18 months to 30 months. And this one is, I think it was actually quoted at 12 when I looked at the proposal, but now we're being told it's eight. I'm not sure if that's actually realistic. So I caution the board that they don't get into a expectation this will actually be done in eight months. It's not that would be unprecedented. The reality is it takes a lot longer. But a programmatic EIR is not a bad idea, but it needs to be for the program, not just for one or two things. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I could add a little clarification, please. Piecemealing in the SEQA terminology is not taking the entire project for environmental analysis. A programmatic EIR focusing on a topic specific is not piecemealing. Additionally, I have great confidence in both the amount and the timeline since this is a contractor that we have been working with for the last year and a half. And I think that because it is so focused, it would not be as much as other EIRs. But I do have confidence in the timeline. Not that I'm presenting this to you for its direct consideration. It was only prepared for an example.
For today, yeah.
Good afternoon, Supervisors. Margot Cambara for Lake County Community Action Project. The county's current and proposed revisions to the cannabis cultivation tax risk violating Proposition 218 and the voter intent of Measure C. While these actions may appear administrative, their cumulative effect redefines a tax base approved by the electorate. Measure C established a square footage-based tax on cultivation area. Voters expected both the tax rate and the method of calculation to remain stable, ensuring reliable public revenue in exchange for allowing this industry to operate. When your board temporarily shifted the tax base from total cultivation area to canopy area and later adopted a standing opt-out program, allowing permit holders to waive or reduce their tax liability by electing not to plant, these actions substantially narrowed the taxable base. Under Article 13(c) of the California Constitution and supporting case law, any change to the basis, calculation method, or incidence of voter-approved tax constitutes an imposition of a new tax requiring voter approval. Aligning the county's calculation with the state's narrower canopy definition or maintaining an opt-out policy that exempts large portions of permitted land from taxation triggers a Prop 218 requirement. The fiscal consequences are equally significant. Lake County currently has more than 22 million square feet of approved cultivation area. At Measure C's authorized rates, even assuming all cultivation were outdoor, the county should be receiving more than $22 million annually. Instead, nearly 80% of approved area is non-producing due to opt-outs and site abandonment. Actual revenue has fallen to roughly $2.6 to $3.5 million per year, an effective rate of about 11 cents per square foot, far below what voters approved. Meanwhile, the cannabis program operates at a net cost to taxpayers, accumulating deficits of approximately $8.7 million to date and projected to exceed $10.6 million next year. In effect, the county's current policy has converted a voter-approved revenue source into a taxpayer-funded subsidy for the cannabis industry, an outcome at odds with the intent of Measure C and the fiscal integrity required under state law. Respectfully, we ask the board to abide by the statutory requirements of Propositions 218 and 13 and to revert to the tax rates and formula authorized by the voters through Measure C. Doing so maintains compliance with state law and preserves the integrity of voter-approved tax. If the county wishes to make the county... Excuse me. Make the canopy calculation or opt-out program permanent, those changes must be submitted to the voters for approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comment? Here comes somebody.
Hi, I'm Charles Morris, Middletown. My concerns are basically, you hit some really good key points, and that was a very good report that you did with odor. Can I suggest to fix the odor thing? Scenic Middletown is between the Napa County line and the Middletown itself. So that's a scenic area where people come in and get the impression. A lot of cities, they do not allow pig farmers to have pigs in those areas where you can smell that stuff. So in the summertime, when people come into Lake County, you know, and you can smell it even with the gorilla growers, you're like, whoa, okay, yeah, we know it's here. You can't see it always, but you can smell it. So there has to be something, some kind of ordinance out there that they use for pigs that we can use for marijuana. That's just my suggestion. The other thing is, we have a huge water problem out there. I really can't say that, you know, doing anything in the scenic quarter is going to be good, so I'm really against that. But the biggest thing is, is I've been with math for over 10 years. And I questioned the sheriff and I talked to him about what's happening with marijuana. He said two things to me. Sheriff Martin said two things. He said, number one, everybody's shaving their beards and they're not going to go out and find those guys who are growing weed. They're still growing it. Right now, it's making it through the back doors, a black market weed, and it's getting into the system. Nobody's paying taxes on that, okay? So we're not doing that. And then on top of it, there's no enforcement for the kids because we we're not going into the schools and actually enforcing the laws that say if you're too young and that's it. We know, I've been a teacher, we know that it destroys the brain, okay? When your brain is still growing up to age as much as 25, it's going to make you dumber. It's basically, the science is simple. We really need to have some type of enforcement there. But Sheriff Martin is not going to get the money if we aren't getting any. And these numbers are insane, you know, going from 22 million to 2.5 million. We have to tax it and we have to assume it's there even when it's not there. And if we have to, if Sheriff Martin has to go out and get rid of the gorilla growers so the honest tax-paying growers can do it, then we need, we need those guys to grow their beards and go out in the woods again. We can't just act like, you know, we've lived happily ever after since we've legalized it. I think there's a lot of work here. You know, if you like cannabis or not, it's here to stay. But I think that we have to, we have to, we have to be realistic about what is our future and what kind of impression are we giving to the children? What kind of impression as a society are we going to be? And it just hurts my heart that this kind of issue is, you know, even being considered. That's all I got.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Supervisors. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Autumn Karsy. I operate several businesses here in the county in relation to cannabis. I'm here to speak on the proposed cultivation and business tax rates. Cannabis is the second highest tax generator.
Can we talk about that during the tax rate? We're on the task force changes. I want to hear what you have to say for the tax rate.
Okay. I can say the tax rate, sure.
But I feel like we're kind of conflating the two all in one.
Thank you for that.
It's okay. I have two comments today. So I'll just start with the first one on the proposed EIR relevant to SEQA expertise. So I want to speak in opposition of spending a quarter of a million dollars where odor is a primary focus. According to the consultant's proposal, the EIR would cost anywhere from $227,000 up to $250,000 with the contingency. The proposal includes 27 meetings, multiple draft cycles, and a cost structure that increases the volume if public comment is high. That means the more people complain, the more taxpayers pay. Odor is subjective, compliance is not. While cannabis is being singled out, agriculture occurs all around us. Vineyards apply sulfur, cattle ranches emit methane and waste odors, fertilizer and manure are spread county-wide throughout agriculture. Yet no other crop is being asked to prove that it doesn't smell. If odor becomes a new enforcement standard, SEQA becomes a weapon, not a tool. We're already seeing SEQA weaponized throughout the county. The same group of individuals demanding stricter environmental regulation for cannabis. The people who routinely email and show up before this board illegally trespassed onto my private property with chainsaws, carved an illegal trail through habitat that was sensitive and two weeks before my appeal hearing. This is not an allegation. It's documented, captured on multiple game cameras, recorded by California Fish and Wildlife, and my biologist, verified by CONSER, an environmental firm which stated this is in fact a new trail. They then proudly posted about it on social media. The irony here is uncanny, so I have to mention it. We're being asked to spend taxpayer money to satisfy those demanding environmental oversight who don't follow environmental laws themselves. Instead of funding an EIR that will only empower obstruction, I propose a better investment. Use the same quarter of a million dollars to hire a SEQA environmental expert on staff, full-time. Give the county a permanent expert instead of renting one for a year. Support all CEQA needs, not just odor. Speed up project processing, reduce consultant dependency and delay, and actually improve environmental compliance. For the amount we're spending on the EIR, the county could hire a qualified CEQA planner or environmental scientist for multiple years. That creates institutional knowledge, builds capacity, and it pays dividends on future projects. The EIR is not about odor, it's about power. Let's invest in solutions, not a process that rewards complaint volume. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the chambers? And if not, I know there's some on Zoom, possibly. iPhone 12 Pro Max, if you can unmute.
Gai Laewo, Hillsbury Family Farms, and I do not support this at all. Let me be clear, Director Turner isn't here to present the cannabis ordinance. She is here on a normal day to spend more county money to further her own incompetence. On page nine of the placeworks agreement, it clearly states that both placeworks and county staff must be held accountable. Yet what we continue to see is the opposite, a pattern of avoidability at every turn. Case in point, in the county memo, it states metric tags and their destruction. My farm was instructed by county staff to hold on to metric tags for annual compliance inspections, even though it goes against state law. When my farm filed complaints with Director Turner herself and with this board, they go unanswered. Now this board is being asked to approve another costly expenditure, one that could be the applicant's responsibility and not the county's. We've experienced per firsthand is plausible deniability being used as a management strategy. Let's talk about the live scan processes, the same processes that every cannabis applicant is required to compete. The state's own application guidelines say that the live scan needs to be completed once and remains valid for the duration of the permit unless the applicant is arrested and rearrained. So I asked the county and I asked Director Turner, how many cannabis applicants in Lake County have been arrested and rearrained since 2015? Not one, none. If Director Turner can tell us how many of them have been arrested and rearrained, I would appreciate that information to be shared. Why are we still seeing this board use background reviews as a tool to stall, deny, and punish? Because on a normal day, we see Director Turner say that it's going to take two years. Is placework going to follow Director Turner's lead and place applicants under duress to keep the process moving? Because accountability starts withholding Director Turner accountable herself.
Can we stick to?
And since this board has allowed her culture to thrive. How can you support her actions when you refuse to investigate valid complaints or even respond to them? Will this county continue its pattern to take county's applicants, deny their applications, or force them to wait and reapply to pay even more fees? Because thank you Supervisor Piska for pointing out that major issue. Lake County's cannabis application system and culture speaks for itself under the management of Director Turner. So I ask this board again, how can you justify approving this expenditure knowing Director Turner won't allow projects to move forward for another two years? Because under Director De Leon, we've seen it happen in six months. Perhaps we should bring Director De Leon and pay for his medication.
Can we concentrate on this item?
I would rather know if I do not recall. And being placed under duress.
Some of this other discussion, please.
Director Turner, if that's okay with you, Eddie. Or should applicants be placed under duress? Mulleha.
All right. Is there any other? Guest, guest?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Angela Emerald. I'll make this quick. So there was a scenic combining survey created by Director Darby, which was very insightful when we're talking about scenic combining areas that maybe you guys want to look into. Also, in the original draft, Article 73, which was created by Andrew Amalung, the previous cannabis manager, it included monitoring thresholds for odor and olfactor limits. Also, if we're going to consider a PIR, will it go out for a full RFP? I understand placework's estimate was just for background, but seeing how long some of the processes have taken with placeworks, I would be a little concerned and reluctant to get on another big project with them. At another meeting, Director Turner stated that there was, that enforcement in the cannabis ordinance lies in other ordinances. And I would like to ask if there can be a section added that references where enforcement codes and regulations can be found and used so that people aren't searching for these documents? And then also, we skipped the second or third item, which was a skip, the cap in size. And it was a talk about cap in size of reducing the canopy to 20-acre maximum. I'd like to request that we stay to a five to 10-acre maximum canopy, just because right now, less than 10% of the approved projects are over 10 acres. I think there's 19 projects that are over 10 acres currently in the county. So a cap size of five to 10 acres seems prudent at this point. Thank you for your time.
All right. Hi, Pat.
Hello, my name is Richard Durham, I'm about a realtor and a cannabis cultivator here in the county. What really gets to me is how people like to attack and normally their base weapons is the odor. I just heard today, one of the speakers say that people come into the county midsummer and they can smell cannabis all over the place. Well, let me tell you, the cannabis plant itself does not smell at all. What they're talking about is the smell from the ripe flower. The ripe flower starts to ripen in late September, October, and it's harvested usually right around October 31st to November 5th. So the entire year is only affected for about six weeks of odor. And you'd have to be pretty close to the grow. So I just, when people bring up this full odor thing, it's really tabooed because it's not that prominent. Yes, if you're 100 feet away from a fully ripened garden, you're going to smell. But the day they harvest it will be the last day you smell. So with that, I just would like the board to consider that really odor is not that giant of a thing. It's a good weapon for people who don't like cannabis. Thank you for listening. I appreciate it.
All right. RTNC, if you can unmute.
Oh, hi, Holly Harris, Clear Lake Oaks. I had just three points that I wanted to make. First of all, I agree with Angela regarding the skipping over the size of the projects. 20 acres is still very, very large. Five or 10 acres would be better, and smaller sizes would also help with odor issues. Then the next one is on the setbacks, the increased setbacks. I think the tiered approach is a great idea. But I also would like the board to consider removal of cultivation from the suburban residential reserve zone. Those are typically very smaller acreage, minimum three acres. And it's the immediate buffer from residential to more rural settings. Oftentimes, it's designated as such for potential expansion of the community growth boundaries. Right now, I have taken a look at it, and I believe Director Turner said during one meeting that there were no projects currently in the suburban reserve zone. So that would make sense to remove it. And then my last point was, one of the, a couple of years ago, the board requested the task force to take a look at dispensaries in Zone C2, which is currently a use-by-right. The task force did take a look at it and unanimously approved to make it a major or minor use permit in C2. I'd like to ask the board to consider looking at that. Right now, we've just had a dispensary pop up in Lucerne, and there's another one popping up in Middletown because it is a use-by-right. Thank you for your time.
All right. James Anderson?
Good afternoon, supervisors. My name is James Anderson with Everview Law. I'm an attorney specializing in land use and environmental law. And I represent a number of cannabis clients in this county and across the state. So I just have a few quick comments on this, and I'll have more comments when a draft version of the ordinance update is available. My first comment relates to the setbacks from off-site residences. I would advise, I like Supervisor Sabatier's suggestion about tiering it. I would also suggest adding flexibility and allowing nearby residents to opt out of the setback if necessary. That creates more flexibility for cannabis cultivators who are working with their neighbors to make their business work. My second comment relates to the cap in size. I don't think that a 20-acre cap in size is particularly helpful. If a project is in an appropriately sit location and won't have impacts on neighbors or any other surrounding property and is otherwise, you know, viable there, I think allowing larger operations is more economically feasible. I mean, the fixed costs are there, the overhead is expensive. So if someone can cultivate a larger operation in, you know, an environmentally friendly way, in compliance with all the regulations, I would recommend that they're able to do so. So those are my comments on the ordinance update. And then a quick comment on the PERR for the odor. My concern with trying to set a threshold of significance for odor is odor is incredibly difficult to quantify. And as has been said by several commentators, the odor from cannabis, you know, whether or not it's objectionable is subjective. And so I'm concerned that opponents to cannabis projects will be able to use thresholds of significance that are created to, you know, further hinder or oppose cannabis projects, especially given that it's difficult to quantify, unlike other off-site impacts such as dust or noise or light or anything of that nature. So those are my general comments. I'd like to close by thanking staff for all their hard work on this. And I know Director Turner has done a lot of work on this, and it's a big project. So we really appreciate her work on this going forward. So thank you and have a good day.
No more hands in Zoom? All right, with that, we'll close public comments and bring it back to the board. Anything else to add? Or go ahead, Supervisor Owen.
Okay, so now, as I remember our meeting a couple, a couple of weeks ago, we were going to be taking the road portion of this to the Ag Department, to the Ag Advisory Committee, is I believe.
The road standards were a separate item. They're not part of this update.
Yeah, and that'll be coming forward, and I'm hoping, I'm trying to get that going like November, to get that finished up.
We're reviewing the meeting, but I thought the board direction was to have a meeting that included Fire District and Farm Bureau and, yeah, but not an Ag Advisory Committee meeting.
Oh, I thought it was the Ag Advisory is what I'd asked for, actually.
Yeah, that's.
We'll double-check that video to see where.
Okay.
Where it kind of.
Ag, okay.
Yeah, yeah, I'll get back to you directly.
With the fire, okay, and then. And then, looking at the setbacks, I know that there are a lot of concerns with that. The odor is huge. I am in the, in the field that where I believe that we need to maybe send this out and look at having the EIR bid on rather than placeworks.
Should the board direct us for that? We would follow all county policies, yeah.
Okay, okay.
This was just given to you guys as sort of an intro to the topic.
Okay, perfect, thank you. That's it.
Supervisor Sabatier?
And I appreciate public comment because I think it hits on the point I was making that some of these things are complicated. A cap, I offered a cap on the size, but I'm not offering it as a priority because I know it's going to be a difficult thing to pass through, and I want something that passes through so we can make impact on these future applications as soon as possible. I, there's many comments I want to make, but I'm going to bite my tongue on some of them. One of them was, for the setbacks, I disagree with getting residential approval or neighbor approvals because what we've seen in the past is neighbors being approached with a bag of money. And I don't want coercion, I don't want anything. It needs to be a rule that we just, everybody gets treated the same. Don't try to befriend your neighbor in different types of ways so that you can get a yes because your neighbor is not permanent, the use permit is. And so I disagree with that level of flexibility. I think the tiered approach is the better approach because our goal should be to minimize the odor that others are subjected to if they live nearby. And a good setback and good zoning is going to resolve a lot of that percentage of the issues. And I still believe we should prioritize on the list. Based on all the comments that we heard, it's going to be complicated already if we choose some rather than putting all of them in there, including the removal of the 10-year permit limit, which I agree with. But we're going to get a lot of pushback. And so I just, I'm looking to simplify and make an impact rather than try to do what we all think is the right thing, which may only just find ourselves in an impasse.
I mean, I understand that too with the conditions of approval. That's one of the biggest things I've always looked at, you know, and I know if we can, if we can ensure those are, you know, conducted, that's the thing for me. But I won't go too further. It's Vice Chair, and then you can go next.
Okay.
I wanted to weigh in. I do think the tiered approach on the setbacks is probably going to be the best plan because a lot of these circumstances are different. And one just standard setback, if you use the 500-feet example, might not fit every situation. So I think that serves us as well. Also agree, I don't like having exceptions for neighbors to sign off and waive.
That was a good point.
Those things because also property changes over hands a lot and don't want to lock something like that in. But I just wanted to weigh in on that point at this, at this time on the setbacks. Because I think that will, odor is difficult, but I think we can mitigate some of it with that.
On the, on the odor mitigations, it's basically setback, the setbacks, the size of the grow, and no zoning in the, as I believe it was Holly that mentioned, the no zoning in the suburban residential area. I think that was, was appropriate comment on that.
The zoning for, sorry to interrupt you, just letting you know, the zoning districts for any new changes in zoning districts is not part of.
Oh, okay.
Article 2.
Okay, I thought it was in here. Okay, I had a note on it for some reason. The other issue, so the size of the cannabis grow versus how far back it is. I'm kind of one that doesn't mind if it's a bigger grow, such as, say, for instance, Pasta Farms has a large amount, but it's in, I, we're not hearing complaints from their neighbors. So something along those lines, if it is placed, but when there's people around that, where it is affecting them. And as far as the gentleman that states that it's only a short time out of the year, you can go down 29 any time of the year, pretty much, between Middletown and Lower Lake. There's the area, I believe, where Ms. Karsy's is. It's somewhere around in that area that you can smell it pretty much year-round. So I don't know if that's ventilation or if there's people growing in that area. And I know there's different types of crops as well that they can plant. So, so some are on, anyway, I'm not going to get into that. Water is the biggest ish, is one of the other big, big issues that we have a lot of complaints on. And I think the follow-up with that, as well as the tags on the cannabis plants themselves, I think for us, actually going back and making sure that they are in compliant is going to be the key to success here. Because I know that we have people right now complaining in my district, as well as other districts, where they're not complying, and the water is not available and they're hauling water. So those, those, I think they just need to be pulled.
Hauling water is not allowed? So if you are aware of any complaints about that?
We've talked to you about it.
Okay, great.
Those, I believe it was Randy, Randy Phillips, is that it? No? Anyway, Pleger. And I, we've talked to you about that over the last few months several times, where they're hauling water into the plants, and he is dry. So that's just one of them.
Thank you. We did finally receive a complaint from Mr. Pleger, and our following up on that.
Thank you.
I think too, you know, there is mentioned about smelling cannabis throughout the year. I mean, I took a walk this morning at about 6:00 a.m., and you could smell cannabis everywhere in my neighborhood, and nobody's growing, they're smoking it. And so, I mean, like, that's just something, I hear something about, you know, odor all the time, but the reality is, it could be hemp, it could be someone smoking it. And I do know that there's farms, I just, everything else I think we can work on. But I think sometimes when I hear the complaints about odor, I mean, they're still smoking it, and they're allowed to. So, I don't know, I just had to mention that. Go ahead, Supervisor Piska.
Odor is always going to be a hard one to deal with. And once it's federally legal, then it's going to be a right-to-farm issue. And it's the same thing with going to Sonoma County and smelling all the cows in Napa. I was there yesterday smelling the crush. You know, agriculture is smelly. I think most of these things on this list, we've talked to, talked about to death. We just need to make the decisions. I think we need to move forward with getting these things done. So I disagree with. So I disagree with just picking a handful of them and moving them forward. Like we have taken so much time from staff and from the public to talk about all of these things. We vetted them out and I think we just need to move on.
Supervisor Sabatier.
Yeah, just the last thing. I was very focused on what was here in front of us. We're dealing with agriculture. I would like to see in the long run if this is possible, and I know I've spoken with Director Turner about this, where if you're growing on ag land or on rural land, then it should probably, we should look at, is there a way to do a reduction on the process to maybe a minor use permit? If you're doing it on rural residential where in the title it says people will be living there more so than ag, that that's where we stay at the major for the more in-depth. Because the amount of work your staff is going to, the amount of time being spent by our planning commission, the amount of time we spend with appeals, all of this process, in the long run, it's still just ag. And if you wanted to do 20 acres of carrots, nobody would care and you'd be able to do it tomorrow. And so I feel like we, there's got to be a way, as long as it's zoned for those things that are prioritized, for those things to happen, as soon as we get into areas where the location is more and more residential, then I would like to see that. That's just my personal opinion.
When we bring forward the draft Article 73 ordinance, it will include permit levels specific to zoning districts.
With that, we are at what, we're moving forward with? I closed public comment.
No action by the board is required for this item.
So we're just, this is an update, we're giving our input and we can move forward from there.
I am moving forward.
All right. Anything else that I leave anything out?
May I hear from you?
Yeah, I've been commenting, yeah. Yeah, I'm good.
That is.
Everything's been said because I wrote them down, I checked them, even the public said the things that I was going to say, especially when it came to, let me see. Just so you can know that I had.
You heard the odor part.
Yeah, odor, the C2 by right, I have an issue with that because I have two in Lucerne, that's fine. I mean, it's C2 by right. That's what I've been telling people that are asking about permits and what they got to come up with. It has been by right, but eventually there might be five in Lucerne and, you know, naturally there could be some in Nice. There's not one in Nice right now, but there was a proposed, there was a proposed, what do they call those? Dispensary. There's one in Upper Lake. And so I know we talked also about possibly having a specific amount in each district or something of the like. I don't know, I just, I think that the by right, I think it's been happening quite some time, if we can look at minimizing that and having it in a different way.
I thought we had directed already for it to be a minor use and not, like all of it, C2 or C1, that it be a minor use because right now it's major use or by right. Is that a separate process?
That is technically, that was proposed as part of the second ordinance. However, we're happy to take a look and see if that can also qualify for the common sense exemption. We'll take a look at that and we'll definitely add it on if we can.
Okay, I mentioned the 10-year permit, that's fine. Conditions of approval should be enforced or at least followed up through. One thing I didn't hear discussed and I might have, I just missed it, was the bond. I would like to see the restoration bond match the hemp bond. I think it just makes sense, but that's the.
How much is the hemp bond?
Let's see. The hemp bond is.
I think the 5,000 bond was what they're able to get in the industry.
It's 5,000 for less than 10 acres. For equal to 10 acres, it's 10,000 and then additional 1,000 per acre larger than 25 acres. In the hemp ordinance.
I think we can get the conditional use permit. I think it's a minor for C2. We can add that in to this draft. So if I could just recap to make sure I got it, we're going off the entire list. We're adding the conditional use permit in C2 for retail. We're going to come back with a tier setup for setbacks from off-site residences. And did the, I hear general interest in the P E I R. Would you like to direct staff to look for the funding to pursue it? Or should we just stick a pin in it for now?
I would stick a pin in it, that's my opinion.
It may, some of the conversation was talking about how it has multiple applications not specific to cannabis. So I can put it on a back burner for now.
I think water is.
Yeah, we need to deal with.
A massive, important things in place that are going to have a massive impact. So I'm absolutely in favor of doing, whether it's a P E I R or some kind of environmental review so that we have a better understanding.
I saw two nods on that one.
No, I'm.
We have three.
Up to five, okay.
I think yes.
Excellent. Then what I'd like, if I could tell you what direction I'm looking for, then the board would just direct staff to look into options for a programmatic E I R regarding water impacts from all conditional use permits, not limited to cannabis. Is that correct? Or do you want it specific to cannabis?
I think that there should be an emphasis on cannabis since we don't go through the same process for other ag. That's just me.
All right, anything else?
Nope, thank you.
Supervisor Sabatier.
I just want to say you have dates here. You said you're going to try. I'm deleting those dates just because I don't, this is a large list for you to come back to us by the 18th. And I would like the planning commission to approve because usually that's how we've done the land use ordinance changes, is it goes through them, they approve, and I don't want them to approve a concept or draft. I'd like to.
Understood.
Go through that. That's just me. That's the way we've done it historically and I'd like to continue going in that direction.
Yeah, that makes.
It is a time crunch and we do have limited meetings due to the holiday season too. But understood and I see three nods on that one, four, great. Thank you. I feel very well directed.
Thank you, Ms. Maria.
Thank you.
With that, we'll close this. We're at 2:56. I know we have a closed session item for three. I know we're behind on our agenda. What do we do from here? What do we have for the three? Are we going to push that back?
We have informed the candidate that we are behind.
Okay, excellent. We will move on to our next item, 6.4, consideration of 2026 cultivation and business tax rates. Treasure Tax Collector, Patrick Sullivan.
So thank you for having us here today to discuss this. Patrick Sullivan, Treasure Tax Collector, and I'm here with Liz Martinez, Assistant Treasure Tax Collector. Our office has received many inquiries about this matter over the last few months, so I wanted to bring it to your board's attention. And that is the consideration of 2026 cannabis cultivation and business tax rates. If your board will recall, over the last several years, there have been adjustments made to the cannabis tax on several occasions. Most notably are some of the adjustments with the rate impositions. There was a 50% reduction granted and there was also a change from canopy, from cultivation area to canopy area. Those are two of the key, the key points of contention, I think, in terms of the comments we've received. What our office is wondering is with those two areas, both the tax rate itself and the cultivation first canopy area, and as well as we realize CPI, consumer price index is a consideration as well, if your board wishes to make any changes. Right now, there's a resolution in effect that will lapse at the end of this year, meaning that these reductions will go away. So the status quo would result, would actually go back to the original measure. Tax rates would be restored, we would go back to cultivation area instead of canopy, and we would go and impose a CPI increase each year on both the cultivation and business tax. So I know this is a matter of concern for cultivators and cannabis business operators. It's a matter of concern for our office as well. And I think our biggest ask is that whatever the board decides to do, if you do wish to make any changes, that we resolve this by the end of this calendar year. Because cannabis runs on a calendar year system, so January 1st, whatever system is in place will go into effect. So we really want to avoid making retroactive changes. We'd like to set it this year. So we wanted to bring it to your board's attention so that you can discuss. We do have, we provided additional information with the agenda, including the cannabis tax history, the resolutions. I know time's sensitive, so I don't know that we need to run through that. But if there are any questions, we're happy to go through that.
Supervisor Pyska.
Yeah, thanks for bringing this and plenty of time for the end of the year. But just to recap on these changes that we made, we have the ability, like the voters, it's been brought up a lot, the voters voted on certain thresholds, but we have the ability to lower them but never raise them.
Yeah, and I would clarify there is, because there may have been some confusion on this, there's another item coming from our office in two weeks. It will be a revised cannabis tax ordinance. So permanent changes and other more substantive changes to the ordinance would occur there. But yes, we, our office's understanding is that we cannot expand the scope of the tax. We cannot increase it either in rate or in application. But your board is able to direct us to make other temporary modifications that result in a reduction rather than expansion.
Okay, and then just looking at the broad, broadly, what's happening around the state. So the state has temporarily reduced the excise tax for three years, correct?
Yes, the state has reduced that tax. I would note that there are other counties and cities that have continued to offer reductions. I think most notably is Humboldt County. Humboldt County has suspended their cannabis tax. I would point out, we're very differently situated than them. Their tax revenue had really crashed. They're structured differently than we are in the ability to enforce the tax. So I know we see decreases in some suspensions statewide, but I would point out that each situation is unique.
Okay. So I mean, given everything that our tax collectors just shared with us and what's happening in the economy and the market, the cannabis market is the reason why the state has made these reductions. I'm okay with just holding this for another year and coming back and looking at it next year and evaluating it.
Vice Chair.
Yeah, I appreciate you providing all the background documents. I don't think we need to go through all that today. But I definitely want to get a decision made because I don't want you to have to deal with this after we're in the middle of a calendar year. I think we need to make a decision right away so that we can be clear on next year. And I'm okay with leaving it how it is for one year and then reevaluating it. I don't want to go, I wouldn't want to go longer than that, but I think I'd be comfortable with a year of status quo or however we have to redo that for one year.
So just to clarify what you're getting at, that would require bringing back a resolution that would extend the modifications for a year, that we would offer the 50% rate reduction, we would offer the canopy area for imposing the tax, and we would suspend the CPI. And that would be for a year. And we would have to return with that resolution. Okay.
I'm sorry, I said Vice Chair. Supervisor Sabatier.
Thank you. I agree with my colleagues that we need to continue moving forward. I still wish and hope that in the future, we will get to a point where we can set a percentage on this. So no matter what happens to the price of a pound of cannabis, we will still continue to grow and collect what is appropriate. Everything else is based on a percentage. Here it's a flat fee. And I just think that eventually that's where we need to go. I know that's been a concern to go there, but I want to keep harping that that is the best way that we can do this in the future. Those who think that we should be taxing people who don't do an activity that is horrible, just because you went into a store doesn't mean you should be taxed for every item you looked at. It should be what you're actually buying. What you get taxed on cultivation should be what you actually cultivated, not just because you have landed a permit. We shouldn't be forcing people to pay taxes on something they're not even doing. That makes no sense to me whatsoever. So I appreciate that we've come to a consensus that it is the cultivation area, the cultivation, the canopy area, not the other ancillary pieces of land. And looking at ways to ensure that a flat rate does not spell the demise of an industry that is currently seeing a 40% year-to-year increase based on this area that we're in. We went from 2.6, approximately 2.5 to 3.5. Let's keep going up. Our sales tax is less than $5 million and we've almost recreated the sales tax with the cannabis tax. Let's not get out of hand and think we can collect $22 million. It's just not realistic. Nor do I want to force to go there because we've already got some problems that we were just talking about. So as is, I would love to do two years, but it seems that my colleagues are asking for one year. Just wanted to let people know I'm open for that and let's continue to grow that tax and contribution to our general fund.
Supervisor Owen.
Okay, well, I'm kind of looking at it a little differently. I'm looking at what the voters had actually voted on. And I feel that it has recovered some. So I'm kind of thinking we need to let this expire. I would be willing to have a conversation on the canopy versus the cultivation. However, as far as the taxes go, I'm one that actually believes that we need to go with what was voted on by the voters.
All right, I'll open it up for the public. If there's anyone that would like to come up and speak on this item, please.
Good afternoon, Board. Kyle Bill with the Kanoka Tai Native Wellness, and I appreciate the conversation and look forward to the future conversations that are around the cannabis tax specifically. Kanoka Tai Native Wellness receives a lot of funding from Elevate Youth California, which is revenue from tax, the tax on cannabis. And one of the things that we met with Senator McGuire's office to let him know that the freezes are holding on the tax increases are going to directly impact a lot of the work that we're doing, especially in rural counties like Lake, to address a lot of the impacts that minority communities have been impacted by the cannabis, wouldn't say industry, but prior to the cannabis legalization, minority organizations, minority communities were oftentimes impacted by illegal cannabis. And we still have ripple effects of that and we're working right now to address it. But with the tax freeze, it comes with making the funding more, way more competitive, especially trying to get a lot of those revenues here in rural areas like Lake County. And so considering the state of the federal government, we're relying heavily on a lot of the local and state funding to support a lot of these efforts. And so one of the concerns that I wanted to bring to the attention, I'm glad that I hear Supervisor Owen and Pyska talking about, is there were promises made prior to getting the measure passed to legalize cannabis? And now to see that some of those promises are not being fulfilled is going to have an effect, especially on youth and minority groups that are doing a lot of work to combat the onset of illegal cannabis activities. And also, some of the tax funds are used to remitigate some of the impacts of illegal cannabis growth in the environment. So I just wanted to bring to the attention of the board that I understand that we need to balance out, you know, how to support local businesses, but also looking at how those funds go into bigger, to make bigger impacts within our community and the work that we do with our youth and our environment to do that. So I would be willing to share a little bit more about some of our efforts and how we've been able to leverage the taxed funding that we received to do this work. Because it is something that we're concerned about and just want to ensure that, you know, you as elected officials are informed on some of the impacts, whether or not these increases are in place or scaled back or frozen. So there is an impact and I just wanted to express that to consider in that we would be willing to meet with anyone to talk a little bit more about some of the work that we're doing with the resources that are generated from tax revenue.
May I ask Kyle?
Yes, please.
Kyle, how much funding do you get? And so your funding for Kanoka Tai comes from the state's cannabis tax?
Correct. And we're looking at over $1 million that we've received just from Elevate Youth California. And we're looking at over $1 million that we've received just from Elevate Youth California. And that helps also create jobs here in our county because we hire locally. And so, there obviously is a lot of positive effects that we're able to use those revenues from the cannabis tax to do positive things in the community and also contribute to the local economy as well.
Is it a million a year or a million collectively?
Collectively. Our last award was nine, it was $500,000 that we received, and then we received two additional grants prior to that. So, collectively, it's over $1 million that we were able to secure to do work here locally.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks. Any other comments? Please come on up.
Rick Mayo, citizen of Lake. Founder, president of Local NAACP. If the county government asks the voters to decide on a proposition that you put before them, you should abide by the decision of the voters when you ask them to do that. Because apparently you didn't want to make the decisions yourself. That is a bad position to be in, have to make those kinds of decisions when you have the whole populace that have a different point, may have a different point of view on the subject matter. But whatever the citizens voted on, government should always adhere to the decisions of the voters. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick.
Supervisor Sabatier.
Yeah, I just want to, number one, it's a tax, so it has to be voted on by the voters. And number two, within the measure that was approved by the voters, it says the Lake County Board of Supervisors may repeal this chapter or amend it in a manner which does not result in an increase in the amount of the tax, which means we're allowed to amend it to fit what is going to work. And so, we threw something out in 2017 without any permits, without anything, with hopes that maybe the $1 a square foot would work and $2 a square foot would work. The entire state has seen reductions in taxes. The state of California has seen a reduction in taxes. Voters voted to give us the tool to reduce it. So, we're not going against the voters. We're trying to make this work so we can continue to collect taxes based on what the voters said. Yes, you can go ahead and tax the industry with the caveat that if you need to make changes, you can make those changes. So, I don't disagree that the voters maybe had anticipated a whole lot more. But I think everybody throughout the state of California and every county is not seeing what everybody thought would be this giant bankroll. And so, I just want to at least explain that we're not breaking the trust. It was actually entrusted that we would be able to do that if the need came. So, just wanted to read that out loud.
Good afternoon, Board. There's no provision in Measure C that gave the authority for the board to make an amendment or a modification to the way it's calculated. And the way Prop 2219 is set up, if you're going to make a fundamental change, whether it's the tax rate or the base or some other provision, it has to go before the board. No, I'm sorry, before the voters, excuse me. There's nothing in what was voted upon that says, that I could find in the actual language that was voted on, that says unless the board thinks otherwise, they can do something. I'm not saying that, you know, $22 million is a good idea or a terrible idea. That's, my biggest concern is that this was a bargain. The language in the measure mentions that in exchange for cultivation, there would be a tax that would provide approximately $8 million at that time in order for it to fund things like education and law enforcement and code enforcement and other services for this county. Because that money is not coming in, those things are either not getting funded or they're being subsidized. The cannabis CDD has been at a net cost to the county for the last three years. And another thing was mentioned, eight point some odd million so far. And it's projected another $2.9 million for the next budget year. So, it's running out of subsidy. That's not sustainable. Last year, when this came up, the conversation was, "Well, I was willing to consider it for another year, but that's it." And now we're here, and we're here, and we'll kick the can again. Meanwhile, we're in a financial crisis as it is, and we're not bringing in the money that we anticipated. And this is not a one-sided bargain. If you reduce the taxes and there's no other effect, that's one thing. But there's been an expectation given to the voters that this money and revenue would be funding services. And those services either being underfunded, a copter is constantly being challenged because it doesn't have the resources or the personnel. You have, you know, the education I've just mentioned. It's not, it's not, "Well, if we lower it, it'll be okay." This needs to go back to the voters. Otherwise, bring it back to the way it was originally articulated, and which is by cultivation site and the $1, $2, $3 rate. And I know that's not what everyone wants to believe, but that is what's in the law. And you're going to set yourself up for potential legal liability and challenge because there's no precedent for, this is not, well, we're just going to lower the taxes. There's, this was in the, there's no provision for the county in the, what was voted on to allow this reduction. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Do we need to refer to Lloyd on that?
I don't, not that I know of.
Okay.
I mentioned some of this before. I went to all the meetings, and the county folks came, and they promised us the world. They said that there's going to be all these taxes. It's going to change everything. It's a big game changer. We tried to take a vote at the Middletown Hall saying, you know, "Do you want this or not?" Okay, it was actually kind of a time of enlightenment because a lot of growers came out of the hills with big bogs, with big handfuls of cash that wanted to be legal, which was actually good. And you could see that they were buying land. You could see a lot of stuff that was happening. But I think we got drunk with money, and the reality is this. The county went along with this. They were talking numbers like $21 a square foot. When we tried to vote on it, it was such a controversial vote. People who were pro-marijuana were saying, "You do not vote," and getting in people's faces. And it got pretty crazy. I thought the cowboys and the dope growers were going to fight with each other. If we keep going the way we are going and just not keep the promises that we gave the people, and it passed. And I'm, you know, I spent 31 years in the military. I follow the Constitution. I pay my taxes. I do all those good things. We can't just go wishy-washy when we feel like it. The cash is probably all gone. Some people have lost a lot of money. I want to see, the sheriff has basically, you know, took his team that used to go in the hills and take away the gorilla growers away. You're telling me you made $2.5 million. Go get the gorilla growers and make those, the people that are actually growing it legally and paying their taxes, give them the better chance. Right now, I don't know where the money's going or where it's going to go, but I think we had to tax, we got to tax, we got to tax until we get it. It's a capitalist system. You know, I mean, even government is a capitalist system because if they don't collect taxes, they can't provide services. I think turning this into some kind of social welfare program for something that kills children's brains and doesn't have a whole lot of good qualities, you know, to it. I mean, I know the whole argument between the vineyard growers and the cannabis growers. Personally, I think you want to give cannabis growers a fair shake, but at the same time, make them pay the taxes. Okay, we got to, because there's so many negatives that are going to have to be covered through services. I worked for the probation department here in Lake County. It is horrific what I saw. I saw eight-year-old kids that lived in the hills and were malnourished, that, you know, had been raped brutally all the time. For me, it's thinking, "Okay, let's just go ahead and get everybody out of those hills. Those kids can go to school and don't have to hide out on boats so they don't get raped." That's what the kids, some of these kids were doing in Lake County back in 1995 when I was working there. They would throw anchor off the side of the boat and hide inside of a boat so they didn't get raped by dope growers. Okay, there's a lot of dark stuff that goes with the whole thing. You know, support the legal growers and do the taxes. That's my opinion.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Good afternoon again, Supervisors. My name is Autumn Karsy, local business owner and resident here in Lake County. We're both a farm and processing center and co-packing facility. But the majority of our economic impact to Lake County comes from processing local farmers' material into finished goods that generate sales tax, manufacturing jobs, and ongoing revenue for the county. Cannabis is one of the largest tax contributors in Lake County, second only to sales tax. And yet, cannabis is the only agricultural sector taxed on canopy square footage, regardless of whether that canopy ever produces a single dollar of income. You could lose your crop, have crop failure, a fire, and you would still be accountable for the tax that year. No vineyard is taxed per square foot of vines. No pear orchard is taxed on canopy size. Only cannabis is taxed on potential, not production. About the market accurately, the industry is not generating the same revenues it did in years past. There's only so much meat on the bone here. But that's not a sign of failure. It is a market correction caused by overproduction statewide and overtaxation at every level, local, state, and excise. When overproduction intersects with overtaxation, margins compress, not because businesses are poorly operated, but because the math stops working. This is not magic. This is just math. And I want to be clear. I've spoken with small farms, large farms, and everything in between in this county, and every single one of them has said the same thing. If taxes continue to increase, they will not continue to operate here. If the farmers leave, the processors shut down. Other counties are adapting and not tightening. Sonoma County reduced their cultivation tax to $0.30 per square foot to remain competitive and keep the farms in the county. Humboldt County, as mentioned before, eliminated their cultivation tax entirely. This makes careful rate setting essential. Economic consequences for Lake County, because we farm and process, if you run the farmers out of the county with excessive taxation, we will eventually cease to exist. Not because we aren't strong operators, not because we haven't invested tens of millions of dollars, but because we depend on local agricultural supply. When farmers leave, you don't just lose cultivation tax revenue. You lose manufacturing jobs. You lose sales tax from finished goods. You lose downstream economic activity, and you lose one of the largest revenue-producing industries in this county. You cannot grow tax revenue by shrinking the tax base. My request is do not increase taxes, considering aligning with Sonoma to remain competitive, begin drafting Future Ballot Language Initiative that gives the board flexibility when it comes to taxes. We're not asking to avoid taxes. We're only not being, we're only asking not to be taxed out of Lake County. Thank you for your time.
Public comment, any other, come on up.
Good afternoon, Board. Margot Cambara. Just a reminder, the cannabis industry drafted Measure C. They came up with the framework for taxation. Another reminder is that Lake County has the lowest cannabis tax rate in the state. If we look at tax cuts, what is going to be the criteria? We are not a rich county, so who is going to get a tax rate? We know that the grape industry is struggling. We know that walnut industry is struggling. But they are our legacy agricultural crops. The number one agricultural crop, according to the latest agricultural report from Lake County, is grape, wine grape. So, please consider the bigger picture of when you are going to be granting tax cuts and reductions in fees, we need to be, as Supervisor Pyska reminds us, that we should be consistent and we should be fair. And it should make sense across the board and across agricultural crops and industries. The other thing is that your board has shown foresight in anticipating impacts to our population, to our community. SNAP funding has stopped, and your board is going to be considering an emergency agenda item to put together a work group to look at that. Funding, this is unanticipated budget need. So, we need to be very smart about where we're going to allocate our county dollars. Thank you.
Is there anyone on Zoom? Guest, guest?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Angela Emerald. I'd like to, I agree with Mr. Kyle Bill that promises are made are not pulling being realized. It was mentioned that there was an increase in tax revenue since 2023. That can actually be attributed to the increase in approved cultivation permits. From 2023 to 2025, tax revenue increased by just over $1.6 million, while the taxable square footage increased by over $7 million square feet. So, taxes from 2023 to 2025 on $7 million square feet should have been closer to $3.5 million. Just for clarity, the full tax rate would be applied to the 2026 growing season, which would be due in 2027. Cultivators will pay their 50% for this year's crop, which is due next year in 2026. The full tax rate would apply to the 2026 crop, so cultivators have time to reduce or opt out for next year. Taxes for the 2026 season wouldn't be due until 2027. The other thing that you guys have a problem with is that you guys have a lot of growers that are not abiding by the rules that you currently have in place. But yet, here we are discussing another tax reduction in a county with one of the lowest cultivation rates. The Board of Supervisors wants to keep approving permits and oversaturating the market and at the same time, reduce the local tax rate. This seems like a flawed system that we have going on here, and I think we really need to take another hard look at it again. Thank you.
iPhone Pro Max, please unmute.
Skylar Laywell, Pillsbury Family Farms, federally recognized member of the Manchester Port Arena Ban of Pompanoans. And I don't have a problem paying our reduced cannabis cultivation tax. Paying the cultivation tax should be a sign of a good factor and a sign of being a good cannabis player. The proposed policies behind the cultivation cannabis tax have devastating real-life consequences for four small farmers like myself. My company cultivates only 5,535 square feet, a fraction of an acre. Yet, I have been charged as if I was cultivating the full four acres totaling over $64,000 in 2022. And now, the proposal to take away the reduction in canopy and eliminate the option to opt out adds another layer of harm. Small legacy farmers like myself will be pushed out by the inability to pay a $64,000 tax bill based on the full four acres when I only have 8,000 square feet cleared for canopy and only one state license for one acre with the state recognizing I cultivate only 5,535 square feet and already reduced with ongoing relocation proceedings since 2022. Even if I could grow the full four acres, there is no facility in this county that is capable of processing that much product in a short amount of time. And many farmers do rely on the ability to opt out and reduce canopy because it is necessary to survive in the struggling market. And removing the options doesn't strengthen the program. It's designed to increase the taxes, the penalties, and the fines until we're driven out of existence. Thank you Supervisor Pyska for at least raising the question about the cannabis tax revenue and the cannabis equity grant funds from 2022 to 2023. Because while big operations might struggle at a $2,100 double payment for legacy operators like myself, it's survival money. During 2021 to 2023, the cannabis tax revenue were at a record high, most likely due to double payments from the cannabis equity grant and payments from the farmers. I was recently invited onto the local radio show, KMA Cannabis Hour, to share my experience of legalization and what it's like dealing with these taxes. And when I speak about my situation out loud, I have come to realize that I have been abused by this system and how my situation with our tax collector has inspired the Humboldt Supervisors to get rid of the taxes. So, when this memo asks you to provide direction to staff, I am asking you to provide with direction with integrity, demand a full accounting of how the cannabis taxes are administered, ask why the tax collector has inserted himself into relocation matters, ask why a licensed attorney serving in the knowledge of public trust is allowing to use his knowledge to sidestep legal accountability and drive small farms out of existence. Because the emails between Sullivan, Director Turner, County Council Lloyd Guentana, and Deputy Administrator Matthew Rothstein and Grant Analyst Casey Moreno reveal direct coordination, and the Sheriff's Department silence only reinforces how deeply this corruption runs. And it shows that Lake County- And it shows that Lake County government employees are allowed to act above the law and not mess up. Waleha.
Is there any other hands in Zoom? James Anderson?
Good afternoon again supervisors, uh, James Anderson, Everview Law. I represent a number of cannabis clients in the county and across the state, and I just want to make a couple comments on this. Um, you know, in general, I would support extending the, uh, the reduction in the tax rates for cannabis cultivators. I think this board has recognized and said at least several times uh over the last years that cannabis is here to stay and it's gonna be part of this county going forward. And, you know, it's difficult as a cannabis cultivator because they are treated so differently from any other agricultural product. They're taxed locally and by the state. Um, they're competing across the state and different counties have different taxing systems. And at the same time, the legal cannabis market in California is still dwarfed by the black market almost to, you know, a ten-to-one ratio based on the DCC's most recent market report summaries. So, you know, my advice would be to continue this, uh, the reduction in tax to the cultivators. It benefits them, it'll benefit the economy, um, and it will overall help the county. So, thank you and have a great afternoon.
Thank you. There is no more? All right, with that, we'll bring it back to the board. Is there any, go ahead supervisor, you guys were at the same time.
I just have a couple comments to make. Um, Patrick, we, we got a lot of comments, ecomments about this, but um, we're not subsidizing any industry here. We are a net positive with our cannabis revenue, correct?
Yeah, I mean, from, from my office perspective, it is a, a net positive that we are bringing in revenue. It is being allocated in your budget to other expenditures, so even if revenues are down, I'm, I'm not seeing that it's anything but a positive.
And, you know, we, we don't tax grapes, we don't tax other agriculture. So that is the big difference here. And another thing I just want to raise, um, in conversations with Sheriff Bingham, w- we're at a point right now where we have the lowest amount of Alyssa grows we've ever had. That's incredible, and it's because we've been able to support this legal market um over the years. You have a graph here that shows the recovery, and we're having um modest growth over the last couple of years. And one of the callers is correct, that was in part because of the CAN grants that helped support and pay those tax bills when years were really um lean. So I, I think my colleague has a really good point. When this was um thought up in twenty seventeen, we couldn't anticipate where we are today. And so we have had to adjust uh to make sure that this market and this industry isn't crushed. But we also have found, um, I feel like we've hit our stride a little bit, and we can look at this year to year because we are able to invest in our communities significantly, especially with Cloptor and with the roadmap task force. We've been able to make real change with the revenue that has come in. But we have to can, we, if we increase our taxes right now when everyone else is decreasing them, we, you know, it's, it's like killing the golden goose. Like, we can't do that either. We need to make sure that um this industry is still viable. And so we have to be able to be flexible and adjust year to year. I would love for us to be able to get back up to those original rates. But then we, if we did that today, we would not have a sustainable market. And we, we would lose all of our growers. So, um, I'm happy to look at it another year. Um, if you want to bring the resolution back, that's something that I would support for one more year.
Vice Chair, then Supervisor Owen.
Well, I appreciate all the uh public comments, and uh I just still think, based on the state of the situation, the state of the industry with what's going on, it makes sense to um extend it another year. Um, my understanding of the law regarding all this, and unless I were to get different info from, from our legal counsel, is that um we have full authority to, to lower or not reduce the tax. As long as we're not increasing the tax, we don't have to go back to the voters. That's the way I understand the law. And I know there's been some testimony that, that it's potentially different, but, you know, that, that's the way I understand it. So, just looking for confirmation.
Yes, under Articles Six and Article Seven of Chapter Eighteen of the Lake County Code, uh, they, each of those articles contain provisions as outlined by both you and Supervisor Sabatier regarding uh any modifications that would result in a reduction of taxes um that is allowed as authorized uh under, by approval by your board.
Thank you, and lastly, uh, you know, I, I said I was willing to go a year because I don't want to lock us into a longer time. I think it should be reevaluated. Again, if we end up doing this, I think we should reevaluate it again.
Supervisor Owen.
Okay, um, what I have, uh, um, I would like, um, Mr. Lloyd to um give us his feedback on um whether we are violating Proposition Two Eighteen as well as Measure C on that um as um Mr. Tom Hlasik had mentioned, and I would like to have clarification on that. I am, though I would like to see it expire, I am willing to compromise for another year rather than extend it for another year. What I would like to see is um twenty-five percent increase. I would like to see it all the way, but if we could try a twenty-five percent um uh kind of cutting the, cutting it in half on that and still staying under the canopy rather than, rather than cultivation, it would give us still some more, I, some more income. And if we could try that even for a year, because I'm obviously outvoted, so I'm kind of grasping for straws to be at, to be honest. Um, whether my colleagues would be interested in entertaining that? To go um to increase it to seventy-five percent of what we voted on, providing it is legal as well as um the, um, staying with the cultivation rather than the canopy. And that's a huge compromise, but I'm outnumbered. So, that's what I'm asking.
I agree with that. Supervisor Sabatier?
Um, I just want to mention a couple of things, um, and, and maybe I'll get myself in trouble. Uh, Mr. Bill, uh, I, I hear you, and I think that services that help people that are vulnerable are important. Um, love to see if maybe, we, we, we have our cannabis going into specific areas of our budget, and one of them gets split up into law enforcement, uh, environment, uh, code enforcement. And then the last one is education. I know that our library uh received some funding from education, but if we see an increase and some of that money is more, made more flexible within the education bucket, love to see a proposal coming from Konokatai to see what it is that the county can do to support that type of work. Uh, because that's been something even Lake County Office of Education has been looking to do as well. And I just think that that's what that bucket is for, is to continue that level of care that our community needs. Uh, and so seeing the increase is not a bad thing in a sense that it does create more money in those buckets. Um, the other side of that is, I know when we started in twenty nineteen, so I don't know what it was in twenty seventeen, uh, it was like twelve hundred dollars a pound. Now, a dollar per square foot is not a percentage, it's a dollar per square foot no matter what. I'm just gonna inflate the price for today, even though I hear two hundred, let's just say it's four hundred. That's a sixty-six percent decrease in the value of a pound. We've this decreased the taxes on it by fifty percent. It is not a perfect match, and again, I hear people saying two hundred, which would be a much more massive decrease. And so, the, 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 the flat rate is the problem. Period. You have to be able to move around in a flat rates environment. If I sell a door and it's worth a thousand today, but I have to pay a, a sales tax on it, if it's worth ten dollars, I'm not gonna get killed by the flat tax because the sales tax is a percentage. And so, we have to be flexible. This is why we were given the flexibility within the ordinance that was passed in the measure. Um, so I, I just think, I am open for looking at the data to see if incremental increases, fifty-five percent, sixty percent, I don't know about seventy-five, we're just pulling numbers out of, out of our heads here. But if we can show, because is it just that we have more people growing cannabis and that's why we saw the forty percent increase? Is it that those same ones grew more of their stuff and were able to make more, more money off the same amount? I don't have that specific data, and maybe we need to drill down a little further, but I, it, it's, I feel, I feel like there's some people in this room who are not happy with cannabis and are trying to get it back on the ballot so that it can cancel the industry altogether. And I, I, I just think you, you can't put the rabbit back in the hat. I think we have to work with what we have. It is three million plus dollars that if we lose, that is an issue. We need to operate it correctly, and we need to use the funding correctly. Um, but I'm worried that the conversation is going in a direction where we're being told certain things that our past county council has disagreed, our current county council disagrees. I disagree, um, just so that we can see it diminished and maybe even vanish. So I, I, I worry about some of these conversations.
One of the things that um our tax collector and I have talked about is getting to a point where we can incrementally step things up. And I think we do need to get there. I don't think this is the year. I think maybe next year we can look at, look at conditions and reevaluate, because I think going from fifty to a hundred percent is gonna be really hard. I do want to get back up. Um, and I think maybe that's a goal that we can try and look for that data you're looking for Supervisor Sabatier, so that maybe next year, if conditions are a little bit different, maybe a little bit more favorable, then we can start making those steps up. Um, because I, I think that should be our goal.
Supervisor Owen?
Um, this would be, and, um, this wouldn't affect the growers until twenty twenty-seven when they have to pay this, just so we know. Um, making the decision now to go up twenty-five percent, which is a compromise, and kind of bringing it up slower um to, so it'd be at seventy-five percent instead of fifty percent. And that's what I'm asking for support on right now, if, if anybody is open to that.
You want me to elaborate why I said I would support that?
Yes.
Because I was one of the supervisors last time that said I would do it for one more year until, so I want to stick to that.
Didn't you say that too?
She, I think, I think she said something like, we talked about incremental, uh.
I mean, it, it is a different year, I mean, different things have happened, so. I wanted to get to a point where we could figure out something in the long term. Um, but the long term is going back to the original plan. We can only do these things temporarily, and I just, it's, for me, I don't think that the time is right.
But I, I just wanted to elaborate because I know you had mentioned last time, I didn't hear from you. And so I want to make sure you do hear from me. Um, I, I get a little frustrated because, um, you know, just being a part of this for a couple of years here. Um, just, you know, we, we came to the, to this whole initial starting point with agreeing to what, what we were starting with, right? And then we get, you know, a good tax year with, with the initial stages of this, the cannabis permits and whatnot. Uh, we're getting people from the black market onto legal market, and we still, uh, and then we get to a point where it's, it's hurting. You know, um, it starts providing fruit, people are vying to me in my district what I use my cannabis discretionary funds for, but yet are some of the same people that try to kill every cannabis project that comes forward. That's frustrating, but they do have valid concerns. It gets very frustrating for me to hear, that's why I mentioned my frustration with the odor before, you know? I think, I, I get that there's permit issues, I get that there's, uh, there, there's beliefs, but it's frustrating to hear when people say things like, you know, pot or whatever, or that it's not, it's, it's hurting people's, uh, you know, there, it's making them, you know, uh, lose intelligence and things like that. There's so many things we can compare to that, and I hate to, all lives matter, that whole situation, but it's just, let's stick to the points. Um, I understand we um, we want to ensure we get all our tax dollars, but at the same time, you know, um, we're, we're at this point. I still want to stick to what I said before though, and that is to, if we can, increase it, you know, an incremental amount. I don't care what that is, I would be glad to do that, but it looks like we have the consensus for what it is. And so I just did something I don't like doing, and that's talking about something we already had a consensus to. But I know people want to hear from me, so.
Well, I was trying to persuade.
No, not you.
I'm trying to twist arms up here.
Uh, I just want to ask, and I apologize, Mr. Sullivan. Um, can we please put the Measure C on your website? I go to the uh, the main page for it, and it has cannabis taxes, Measure K is available, but Measure C is not. When I do a search for Measure C, I can't find Measure C. It shouldn't be a hidden needle in a haystack, it really needs to be ob- obvious and available. I, I can't seem to find it.
Um, it's interesting you would say that, because I was actually gonna remove Measure K from our website because the appropriate place to house it is in the MuniCode section, because it's, those code sections are the same. So, I, I guess I actually have a certain level of concern. I, I'm happy to put a link, yeah, yeah, but um, but yeah, we want to make sure that it's always in the most updated way. And for instance, Measure C is, you know, my intention is that, that language will all be changed in two weeks because we will be bringing a different revised ordinance back that's gonna be adding a lot of enforcement language. So, uh, but yeah, happy to put a link up.
And, and if those resolutions can be made available as well, because it's hard to follow the bouncing ball since we've had some changes as well. So, it just shouldn't be, if I'm struggling to find something, then I can only imagine where the public is in trying to do a search on our Lake County website and really cannot come up with, uh, and I forgot that it was on the MuniCode, but the MuniCode, that's, doesn't search the MuniCode when you do the search.
Yeah, we can include a link.
Please.
Vice Chair?
Well, it sounds like where we're going is the, it sounds like we're gonna um extend it another year, but I would like to throw out that maybe we can bring this discussion back sooner next year, a lot sooner than November because there has been, um, several folks talk about maybe uh those other changes. So, I don't want to wait till the end of the year, once we, we look at it again, if we go the way I'm thinking it's gonna go. I'd like to get it back sooner.
Maybe budget.
Yeah.
All right, you have direction? All right, anything else?
Well, no, we'll, we'll return with the resolution.
Did this need a vote to extend, then this?
No, it's just for direction.
He's gonna come back with a.
Yes, to bring a res- a resolution.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
We'll take a quick five-minute break.
Yeah, Kim, please.
Yes, we'll come back at three fifty.